Good morning, welcome to City Hall. from the Forest Hills Christian Church that happens to be in Ward 3, and they do a great book out there. Gerald, if you'll come forward, and before you give the prayer, just give the viewers just a brief synopsis of what's going to happen this Christmas. You all please rise.
This is our 12th year to have what's called "The Journey to Bethlehem." It's our gift to Oklahoma City, we don't charge anything for it. We have close to 8,000 people in four nights that come, and it's the week after Thanksgiving week, and we're just honored to do that as a gift to our city.
Thank you Pastor.
Let's pray. Our Father God in heaven, we hallow your holy name today. Father, we hallow your name because of the blessings we have received. Father, we're grateful for the rain, what a blessing to us. Father, we're grateful to live in a country that has the freedom that we have and the men and women who are willing to sacrifice so that we can have that. Father, I thank you for the men and women here today who pay quite a price sometimes to make certain that this city is cared for, that the people that they oversee are not only known, but Father, that their needs are met. And I thank you for people willing to do that. Father, today we pray that your blessing would be upon this meeting. Father, we pray that the decisions that are made would be made, and Father, in a way that would bless many people. Father, give them clearness of mind and, Father, a very steady direction, let them sense that holy presence. Lord, we do love you, we thank you for this city, and thank you for all of the people that make it the special city it is. Again, please bless this meeting. We thank you in your holy name. Amen.
Councilman Ryan, if you'd do this in the pledge of allegiance, please sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Ryan. Called the meeting to order, and from the office of the mayor, we have some special recognitions to start off. Lisa Seinar from Oklahoma City Beautiful, you could come forward? And tell the folks what's going on here today.
We are honoring today our Adopta Park winners. We have about 90 parks now adopted throughout the city, and we are honoring one from each ward for doing an above and beyond job at keeping their park clean. So, first of all, this is Melissa Braut, and she'll be announcing our winners.
Okay, we have in Ward 1, we have the Lake Hefner Trails, and they are adopted by the OKC Land Runners Club, and they are actually the overall winner. They had the best part out of the whole ward, all the wards, so.
Thank you.
Okay, in Ward 2, we have Paw Park, and it is adopted by Paw Oklaho- OK, and they are actually not here today. In Ward 3, we have Lidle Drive, and their adopters are Lidle Drive Medians. All right, Ward 4, we have Stanley Draper Marina, and the adopters are Reach, which is part of the Boeing organization. All right, we have Ward 6, which is Florence Park, and the adopters are the Historical Preservation Incorporated, and they actually are not here today. Ward 7 is Washington Park, and the adopters are Destiny Urban Academy. And last, we have Ward 8, which is Martin Nature Center, or Martin Park Nature Center, and the adopters are Friends of Martin Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lisa, thank you for all you do for Oklahoma City. Now, we have a special time of year. Wendell, if you'd come forward, please sir. Wendell has been injured in duty, but Director of our Parks and Recreation Department. This time of year, we have a special proclamation from the mayor's office, and I'll ask the court to read it.
Whereas Halloween is a time for jack-o'-lanterns and the annual appearance of ghosts, goblins, and strange and mysterious creatures. Whereas our city's children celebrate Halloween by dressing in costumes and visiting homes in their neighborhoods to receive traditional holiday treats. Whereas the annual Halloween activities provide an opportunity for people in our community to become better acquainted. It is important to our community that children be allowed to enjoy these traditional activities, but that measures be taken to ensure the safety of the children and to protect the rights of homeowners. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 31st, as trick-or-treat night in Oklahoma City, and he encourages children and adults to cooperate in limiting the time of activities to the afternoon and early evening hours, that households indicate their willingness to welcome their neighbors by turning on their porch and exterior lights. That youngsters only call on homes so lighted, and he asks the cooperation of all citizens, young and old, in making this a happy and safe occasion for all.
Thank you Wendell, for all you do, and for all that you do in conjunction with Adopta Park. Would you like to make a few comments, sir?
Each year, I ask us all to remember that the children are having a great time on Halloween, and they're not being careful. So it's up to us as adults, the motoring public, to be very careful. They're the most important people in town, we all know that, so let's take good care of them, please.
Thank you, sir. mayor, item 3A, the person receiving this award was unable to be here today. I'd like a motion and a second to move, defer this for two weeks.
A second.
The motion is second, please cast your votes, and is deferred. Item 3B, notification to Gary Mars as Vice Mayor, starting October 9th, 2012. There wasn't a groundswell of enthusiasm for that.
The court will point the motion and vote.
We have a motion and a second, please cast your votes, and Gary will be our Vice Mayor, starting next week. Item 3C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to request the services of the State Auditor's Office to perform an audit of certain city contracts regarding implementation of various public safety systems, to authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documentation to accomplish this request. Like a motion and a second?
A motion and a second.
Please cast your votes, and it is so moved. Thank you all, moving along. Next item is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for September 25th, 2012, and to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for September 6th, 11th and 18th, 2012. Please cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Our request for unconsistence continues, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, we have a few on page 13, under item 8C1. Item B, 3504 North Zinda Drive, we'd like to strike that, the owner has secured. Item D, 4036 Northwest 16th, we'd like to strike that item to rework. Item F, 2039 Northeast 17th, we'd like to strike that, there is a new owner. Item K, 2320 Northwest 39th, we'd like to strike that item, the owner has secured. Item L, 2324 Northwest 39th, we'd like to strike that, the owner has secured. And finally, item N, 2529 Southwest 40th, we'd like to strike that, the owner has secured.
Are there any other continuces? I'd like to recess the council meeting then, and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, five items.
A second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes, and it is so approved. Adjourn Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, one item.
Motion.
Motion is second, please cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Adjourn OCPPA, and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Systems Trust, one item. Motion is second, please cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Adjourn OCEAT, and reconvene as the council meeting with a consent docket.
We have a motion and a second, are there any individual considerations?
X.
S for A.
Mayor, I had 6A and 6G.
A and G. Seeing no others, Councilman Shidib, if you'd go with item S, sir.
This is to negotiate a contract with Populus to do a conceptual study regarding the convention center. I think there are some arguments that maybe it's premature, but I think there are better arguments that this is the time to go forward, if nothing else, to have them interface with Hargreaves and Jacobs and the other consultants. I, there was some discussion brought up at the convention center subcommittee meeting about the convention center site, and basically, I don't think this is the time to talk about reevaluating the site, but there are some headwinds coming at that site, multiple ones, that I'm not sure it's able to, they're able to dodge, all of them. One would be land acquisition, just as we, our bid for the Santa Fe Station was denied, I mean, all of it, we may have land acquisition issues with all of these projects, but especially there in the center of the Central Business District, you may have headwinds, you may have, the subcommittee talked about having to give up exhibit space if going below grade ends up costing too much, and then there may be unforeseen effects, maybe Hargrove says that there's adverse impact on the park, maybe Jacob says there's adverse impact, that the streetcar route doesn't work with it there, the convention sports and leisure study made clear that public transit and the convention center have to, should interface to get to the next tier, and maybe there's some other unforeseen impact on development in the area, but I just, I would hope that Populus, I think sometimes, and I think this is, sometimes, I think they call it the IKEA effect, when you, when it's your creation, when it's your blood, sweat and tears that comes up with an idea, and you have ownership of it, sometimes it's harder to let go of it. This site was the recommendation of Populus, and they continue to recommend it, I just hope that if evidence starts accumulating, that maybe we should look at the convention center site, if all three of these headwinds hit at the same time, then I would hope that...
Isn't that the purpose of the Populus study, though? To identify those potential problems?
Well, it's, we won't know about, like, for
instance, the low-grade aspect of...
Absolutely.
Until Populus does their study. And, you know, the convention center site was approved by the convention center subcommittee, the oversight board, and the city council, and so to suggest that we need to go elsewhere before we find the facts of the existing site, I think is premature.
I agree, it's premature to talk about another site right now, I'm just saying that there may be things outside of the conception of the convention center itself that may affect...
But Populus was instructed, or the proposal will instruct Populus to consult and coordinate with those other consultants.
Absolutely.
Ensuring we avoid what you're suggesting we might run into.
Right.
Can I, item A and G?
Yeah, item A is really just a question, this is, we're providing some maintenance plan for our police helicopter, and we're paying for it from our asset forfeiture account. I think it's just curious, on an annual basis, is there a number that's consistent that we collect through asset forfeiture?
It varies greatly from year to year, I will tell you that.
I don't have the number of what we collect on that, but we can get a number for you and look at what the average is. I do know it varies because of the source of the, of the revenues and the types of seizures that are made, and so, we can get a number for you on that.
I was just curious, kind of, what the magnitude of that might be.
Seizing drug assets is not our most stable revenue source.
And my second question was with regard to 6G, and this is the release of some irrevocable letters of credit for the Gaylordia Section 10, and accepting a replacement letter of credit, but it is for a greatly reduced amount, and I didn't see in the memo that there was a maintenance bond in place, and normally, I see that.
There will be a maintenance bond in place, and it is a reduced amount because of the fact that they've done most of the work.
Okay.
And so there's just a little bit hangover.
This is a letter of a credit that covers the improvements, and then once the improvements are in, there'll be, public works will work on the maintenance part. This is just the letter of a credit to assure that those improvements are done, and if they're not done, the city would have the funds available to do it.
Thank you.
Once they're completed, then the maintenance part kicks in with public work.
Okay, it just seemed to me that if we were releasing a letter of credit because the work was done, we should have a maintenance bond in place. It seemed like those two things should have gone together.
Well, releasing, this is releasing and accepting a different letter, this is for a different security instrument.
Right.
And so for a lesser amount, because they've got less work to do, but we will, before we release that, we will get the maintenance bond.
We'll make sure that that's...
Okay, that's all, I just wanted to check, thank you.
Thank you. We've had a motion and a second, please cast your votes, and the consent docket is passed. Concurrent docket.
We have a motion and a second, are there any individual considerations on the concurrents docket?
Seeing none, please cast your votes, and it is passed. Item 8, items involving a, requiring a separate vote, first item is an ordinance and final hearing, recommended for approval in Ward 3, ABC 764. Has anybody signed up? There were no protests at the planning meeting. Is the applicant present? This is to put in a restaurant and allow alcohol, beer to be served in conjunction with it. If there are no objections, I'm moved for approval. Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Public hearing regarding dilapidated structures, has anybody signed up? Is there anybody here to speak on any item under 8B?
A motion and a second.
Please cast your votes, and it is adopted. Item 8C, public hearing regarding unsecured structures, has anybody signed up? A motion and a second, please cast your votes, and it is approved. 8D, a public hearing. Mr. Couch, would you like to introduce this one for us, please sir?
Yes, sir, this is the public hearing on the amendment to the budget. This is the, was introduced last week, and there was a presentation by Doug Darrow last week, explaining the gist of it. Primarily, we're doing two things this morning, one is to have a budget amendment, as we always do for carryover, but we also have a budget amendment this time specifically because of the fact that we had more revenue coming in at the last part of last fiscal year, and we believe that we was prudent to, we could carry that over, and it's $1.3 million that we will, believe will be reoccurring revenues for us as we go forward. And that $1.3 million is being recommended to be put in for police officers, to hire additional 18 police officers.
Did you say we had a presentation?
No, we don't, we had one last week.
Okay, we have two citizens that have asked to be heard on this. First, Gary Bates. If you'd come forward, please sir, and give your name and address for the record, and then address the council.
Thank you, sir, my name is Gary Bates, I live at 2729 Southwest 63rd Street, here in Oklahoma City. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a citizen of Oklahoma City, and I thank you for this opportunity to be in front of you today. I have four statements that I would like to address with you today concerning these extra funds and the police department. Item number one, in the years 2008 and 2009, I was a neighborhood patrol captain of an area that's one mile long and half a mile wide, houses ranging from 80 to $120,000 homes. In 16 months, I located and reported three active drug dealers, giving dates, times, descriptions, and locations to the Oklahoma City Impact Team. I did not get police attention until these drug dealers began to watch me and my family. Today, I bring to your attention the failures and the diminishings of the neighborhood watch organizations citywide. That failure, I believe, is due to the revenge taken by lawbreakers against the bravest members of our community who are doing policemen's jobs. Item number two, in the year 2011, Thanksgiving through Christmas, I discovered drug needles, crystal meth, and aspirin bottles in public places, thieves stripping stolen cars in the middle of the day, and watched myself, three perpetrators, kick in the front door at high noon. I could not get an officer to come to me. I am told the Oklahoma City Police Department puts all 911 calls into priority categories of sequence. The Oklahoma City Police responds only to life-threatening situations. As a citizen, I understand, I prefer city government spending control for effectiveness. However, to limit the Oklahoma City Police Department to a skeleton and crew of just one officer per five square miles is the same as placing yourself, your friends, and our neighbors in the position of becoming a skeleton. The bottom line to decrease crime in Oklahoma City is more policemen. Item number three, note, it is a frequent observation of mine that the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Department officers are patrolling our city streets. This is a direct result of the shortage of manpower of the Oklahoma City Police Department. Item number four, are you of the opinion to diminish gun sales? Are you of the opinion to reduce the volume of concealed carry per minute? Or if you just want to minimize guns on the streets of Oklahoma City, then give us more policemen. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Gary. Amos Mica. And if you also, sir, would give your name and address for the record, we appreciate it.
Gladly. My name is Amos Mica McCormick, I live at 2209 Northeast 17th Street in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, zip code is 73111, Ward 6. I myself have actually been attacked twice. I reported on several different occasions that there was drug dealing going on in plain daylight, but not only that, you know, both occasions where I reported it, my life was in danger. One time, they, there was a group of 10 young men that tried to beat me up, less than a block from my own home. The second time, I was, they attempted to run me over, right down the street at the corner, they attempted to run me over. We need more police officers, yes, but also, if you are getting off on a Sunday at 7:00 in the morning, you have to walk home if you don't have a car, or a bicycle, or some form of transportation. We need to extend the buses. There should be no reason that the buses shouldn't run on Sundays. I myself would go get my CDL and drive the bus if I had to, because I cannot understand not having bus service on nights and also on Sundays. We have it on Saturdays, why not extend it over to Sundays? It is logical to do so, and I would ask that you would split the money between police officers and buses, because we need both. Thank you.
Thank you, Amos. You've heard from the citizens, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council?
Seeing none, please cast...
I think, I think we ought to respond, at least to the police officer part of it. We've done everything we can in this budget to add additional police officers, and the police chief has, is making recommendations that will change some of the shift regulations so that we'll have more officers covering the city at times when crime is higher. I think we've heard you, I wouldn't want you to feel like either of you, especially on the police officer question, to think we didn't hear what you said. I think we've, this budget makes some pretty substantial adjustments in that regard, but without the infusion of substantial additional revenue, either one of those projects is going to be very difficult going forward for us to do. I don't, I don't think it's a question, though, of not hearing what you say. I think there's a lot of sentiment here to add, to improve our bus service, I think to a man and a woman around this horseshoe. We're very, very committed to trying to do something to enhance our transportation system, and I think the police thing, you're going to see some real evidence... I think the police thing, you're going to see some real evidence of that, hopefully. We're adding more officers, and we're changing the shifts, as I said. So I wouldn't want the public to think you just spoke into a vacuum today, because I think we heard, we hear both of you.
And if I can touch on the police issue, just to further on Councilman White's comments, that in the base budget that we approved in June, we added, was it 22 positions to the police department. Not all of those were uniform, but some of those that were not uniform went into civilian positions in investigations and such, which allowed to put a uniform position back out into the streets. So although those weren't all uniforms, they did have some additional net impact on, on those uniform positions. So with the base budget addition of 22 positions, and then with new money coming in, we're able to fund another 18, that's 40 new positions for the police department this year. You know, that's the most significant addition to the police department since, since 1989 or 90. So it is a significant add. We have ways to go further with the police department, but I think it, it's a, it's a message from this council that public safety is important.
Councilman Greenwell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And just to mention something about the transportation. COPTA is in the process of reviewing proposals from various consultants to help us determine what's the most effective route. So even though their budget may not be increased for this upcoming year, we are constantly looking at what's the best routes and maybe even changing and increasing the number of days with respect to bus usage based upon the consultant study. So it is continuing to be looked at.
And just to go on, just briefly with respect to the police, just to make sure that the citizens remember, a number of years ago, a study was done showing that we needed additional police officers. The number that was advocated was roughly 200. There was also a recommendation to use the officers that we had in a more efficient and effective manner, and Councilman White has already spoken to that. So I think the citizens should be encouraged that we are taking steps as the funds become available to move in the direction of providing additional police protection where it's needed, because we recognize that the public safety of all our citizens is of vital importance.
Mr. Vice Mayor, may I just make one further comment? And today, in today's newspaper, it talked about the city's increase in sales tax revenue for the previous month. I think all citizens can help us to improve the overall services that the city provides, whether it's police, fire, even public transportation, by making a concerted effort to shop here in the city limits. That generates more sales tax revenues for the cities, and I think this council and, and city manager and the staff has done a great job of managing the money that the city raises. So the citizens can take an active role in all of this process by just making a concerted effort to try to shop whenever possible within the city limits. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes, and item eight D is adopted. Item eight E, Mr. City Manager, would you like to speak to this?
Yes. Item E is a resolution renaming a portion of the original Civic Center Park property located northeast of City Hall, and it's named after Carolyn Hill. And as most of you know, Carolyn Hill was the driving force to get the art museum located in downtown Oklahoma City. She passed away a couple of years ago. This has followed the proper city procedures for park renaming and has gone through the Parks Commission.
And I do see that we have some of our friends from the museum here. Jack and Allison are here, representing the Oklahoma City Museum of Art. Thank you for being here, guys. This is really a wonderful opportunity to recognize Carolyn's legacy, and a little bit of a fringe benefit, maybe, from Project 180. We've created a little park that wasn't there previously, right in front of the museum, and I know their plans to perhaps use that as a rotating sculpture garden or some outdoor art space that will really enhance downtown. I would move approval, please.
And if I just, yes, second, and then I just-
We have a motion in a second. Councilman Greenwell?
Just a second comment. You know, the, the museum has been downtown for over 10 years now, and we certainly have no concerns that this will not continue to be an excellent quality project. They, they just do a great job anytime they get involved with the project. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to this.
Councilman White?
My thought is, we probably need to try to do as good a job of managing this little small park as she did, managing the art museum. I mean, she, she brought wonderful things to Oklahoma City that beyond, I think, what any of us might have imagined a few years ago. And I think that obligates us to make sure this park is managed as well.
Thank you, Councilman White. Any further comments? We have a motion in a second to rename a portion of the park. Please cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Next up is a, is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority ratifying a council's, municipal council's settlement of a workers' comp claim.
(inaudible)
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Cast your votes, and it is so approved. Item eight G, do we need to move into executive session, sir?
We do not, sir.
Can I have a motion to strike?
(inaudible)
A motion to second, and it is stricken. Claims record rendered for denial. Anybody sign up to speak on that?
(inaudible)
We have a motion in a second, and it is denied. Items from council. First item under, items from council, the resolution authorizing travel expenses for the mayor and certain city council people to attend the National League of Cities in Boston, November 28th through December 1st.
(inaudible)
A motion to second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Let's start with Councilman Morris. Items from council, sir.
I wanted to talk just for a moment about the streetcar and maybe the relationship between council and the subcommittee. There's considerable discussion at the streetcar subcommittee last week about the route, and maybe some, well, just real ownership of the route, real resistance, that we needed to revisit that route, and that was, that was based on some discussion at council the week before. There's considerable discussion that it's been scientifically determined, that we had the alternatives analysis, and maybe some conflicting messages that we need to listen to Jacobs, but there's really no need to revisit the alternatives analysis, and that maybe, and a sense that the subcommittee would be involved in the, in the Jacobs study going forward. I wanted to, to take a step back, just because I've, I've spent some time with a gentleman named Jarrett Walker. He wrote a book called Human Transit. He's got a good blog on building transit networks called, also, Human Transit, and he advises municipalities and governments across the world on how to build transit networks. He starts off his book with a warning that, that too often we defer to intensely interested individuals because the debate seems too technical for most of us to follow. As a result, we sometimes end up with a transit investment that doesn't, doesn't do, really do what we expected, or that has side effects that should have been foreseen, and encourages councils and policymakers to learn about building transit networks. And I think that, that encourages us to ask, what is it that we, what is the values we're trying to solve? What, what is the purpose of the streetcar? Because I have to say that I'm confused at this point. Is the streetcar a real estate development tool, or is it a transit tool, or is it some combination of the both? And if it is, what percentage? Because the route would be significantly different depending on, on what its function is. I want to talk about going forward, but it's, I think, looking back, we had a fixed guideway study in 2008, 2009, that talked about different options for improving our transit system, bus rapid transit, commuter rail, light rail, a streetcar. And then we had the MAPS 3 came along, and we had, I think, a lot of voters voting for improving the transit system. The, the website didn't say downtown streetcar, it just, it said transit. You could then enter your individual comments below, and it wasn't particularly scientific. Anybody could vote as many times as they wanted to. But I think a lot of voters wanted improvement of the transit system, so they would have seen it as a transit tool as opposed to a real estate development tool. The commercials that ran in the week before the MAPS 3 vote said, "We will responsibly develop a rail system." Didn't, didn't mention a downtown streetcar, but "We'll responsibly develop a rail system." It's always easier in hindsight, and I don't, but it's, it's interesting to read a Gazette article on May 14th, 2009, about how this was being portrayed and being advocated to the public. And we talked about the, the streetcar cutting through traffic like a knife through butter. Unless we, as a council, are ready to have dedicated traffic lanes and make traffic signal accommodations, it's really not going to necessarily have high frequency and be able to avoid traffic congestion. So there's, those are policy questions that the council have to, we, it was, it was portrayed, and I, about that we were going to get federal matching funds. And I, I blasted my opponent in my campaign, because he talked about delaying it, and I argued that that would cost us federal matching funds. I think the reality is, we were never going to get federal matching funds, and I don't think we ever are. I think a streetcar is going to be, we're going to have to pay for it. There's, my understanding is, there's no city in America that's gotten federal matching funds strictly for a streetcar other than Portland. Our political situation's not particularly favorable for us to get federal matching funds. And we, my understanding from Rick Kane, when he talked to the feds about getting feedback, was, you know, you are the first city in America that's trying to build a streetcar that doesn't have a robust bus system, that has a transit agency that's not managing a robust bus system. And by robust, I mean frequency, and the amount of budget, and the amount of hours of operation. We have, not only do we not have a robust bus system, we have the lowest ridership in the, in the country. And so I don't think the feds are ever going to reward a streetcar system with matching funds or additional funds. I think Pete in 2010 talked, brought up some of these issues on the bus, and it seemed like there was an organized flooding of blogs and OKC talk, and to try and suppress that kind of talk, and try and suppress discourse, and I think maybe that was a mistake. Then we had the alternatives analysis, and, which is largely based on automobile ridership and, and bus ridership as opposed to a rail. And it seemed to underscore the importance of interfacing with the Transit Center and with the Health Science Center. That seemed to be where you got your ridership. The alternatives analysis, though, that, that some in the subcommittee are clinging to, really didn't have a sophisticated economic development component. It doesn't account for the interconnectedness of all the projects. What if the convention center site does end up moving? What would that do to the streetcar route? I mean, we just have to be prepared, not be led to a particular route, that, that things may change with other projects that then affect the route. I don't think that alternatives analysis, or the 43 pages I read, discusses the interplay with pedestrians or bicyclists. The subcommittee argues that, that all cities that are doing a streetcar should do a couplet, and so we need to do a couplet, but not all couplets are the same. A couplet that's 2,000 feet wide is not the same as one that's 200 feet wide. A couplet that runs one way is not the same as one that runs bidirectional. For one-way loops to work, they have to service a small area with very high frequency, because for pedestrians going in one direction, in one direction or the other, the rider will have a very circuitous route. And I, I don't know that, are we prepared to make, to do what it requires as a policy body to ensure high frequency? But the solutions, I think, are, is that now we have Jacobs on board, and we need a, a independent, objective study that is free from manipulative. I mean, I think we should all be able to talk to them as stakeholders, but not have, be necessarily, the subcommittee or us be involved in the study, that talks about the interface of the streetcar with the bus system. Not necessarily at the downtown Transit Center, but the study that David talked about, that's going to talk about our bus routes. What if it comes back with, instead of having one hub-and-spoke system with one Transit Center, that you have multiple pulse points where things go into? And so maybe the streetcar could interface with the bus in Midtown, for example, not necessarily just on Hudson. But so they, I think they need to work with the consultants that David and, and COPTA chooses. I, I guess, in, in addition to that, I would, I would ask Jim to maybe help clarify for me what exactly some of the boundaries and responsibilities are for the subcommittee, because I don't, I have some confusion. There is, I guess, with the appropriate level of contact and communication between subcommittees and between a consultant, if Jacobs is coming in and they're going to do a study on the route, what would be the appropriate level of communication for us, for the subcommittee members, in, in working with Jacobs during that study? Second question would be, what would be the appropriate level of contact between subcommittee members and vendors? My understanding, I didn't understand that when Bombardier came, and, that the city didn't invite them, that that was an vendor that was invited by a, a subcommittee member. They're spending money to come here and talk about an alternative to having COPTA run it. Is, is that, I mean, I think that's the first time that's happened in 20 years of MAPS. Is that, what, what would you say on those two questions?
Okay, first of all, on the subcommittees, we have, we have a lot of process on, on MAPS 3, more than we've had on our previous POP, MAPS programs, and that's, that's a good thing. We've got dedicated citizen groups. We've got 90 members, probably, amongst the, the, the subcommittee members, maybe 80, for the subcommittee members and, and for the oversight board. And they're very dedicated to what they do, and they're a part, an important part of, of, of the, of the process. We would, staff would, had envisioned and prefer that, that most of the contact with the consultants be through the committee and subcommittee process, and so that if there, there will be opportunities for all those consultants. First of all, those subcommittees and committees are involved in the procurement of those consultants. They're involved in the selection committee. They sit there and they, they vote as, with staff to decide who those consultants are through a formal process. There's certain ones that need to assist in the cuts, certain ones involved in, in, in the hiring of those consultants, and we would like those consultants to, to interface with the subcommittee through subcommittee meetings, where they come in and be able to make presentations to the subcommittee and, and get that feedback. For, we're, I mean, there could be concern, some concern out there with, with subcommittee members trying to, to work with the consultants on an independent basis. That's not how we, we've done it, done it in the past. Some of the subcommittees are, are more independent than some of the other subcommittees. I don't, there's any doubt about that as we go forward. As far as the interface with, with the consultants, procurement is a very, again, there's process involved procurement, but it's, it's something that we need to be very, very careful with. For example, dealing with vendors, when, when we're going to be, the streetcar, I think is the one that you brought up, a multimillion-dollar procurement process. There are different types of, of ways of delivering the product. There are different types of, of energy methods, whether they're electric, or diesel, or, or natural gas, to, to, to deliver the power source. There's a lot of folks out there that are competing for these projects, and they don't particularly like each other, because they compete every day with each other. It's the same group, and they're competing with each other. And so as we go forward, we need to be very, very careful about having contact with any vendors. We don't want to mess up a procurement, a procurement process by somebody viewing or believing that they've got an improper advantage as we go into it. So again, the key is, as we, we set up the, the requirements for the, for the, for the products as we go forward, which will be done by the consultants, run through the subcommittees, and then put out through a public process. And that's how we've typically done it in the past, and that's the way I would recommend we go forward with it, to make sure that, that we don't have a, a challenged procurement process, because it's, it's a lot of money, and again, we're dealing with, with vendors that, I won't say they don't like each other, I already said that, but it's because they're very, very competitive on a daily basis.
Well, I don't, I don't want to minimize the work that the subcommittee's done. I mean, they've put in tremendous amount of work, and I've learned a tremendous amount in talking with them, and for that, I'm, I'm grateful. I just want a diversity of ideas. I want an independent, I mean, I think I know their opinions. I'd like an independent study to come in and, and not just look at the alternatives analysis, but look at the interplay between all the other downtown projects, and maybe have consult, like a Jarrett Walker. Jarrett Walker has said he's absolutely willing to come here and meet with council and talk about building transit networks and what you have to give up to get, for things. So maybe people like that coming in and just spending some time with us, and can prepare us to make some of these policy decisions.
And again, that's not a problem. We might bring in some folks just like we did a couple of weeks ago, like Mr. Greenwell did. They talked about downtowns, having him brought in either to the subcommittees or to a, a council work- a, a council workshop is, is not out of the question at all.
Thank you.
Councilman, oh, go ahead.
Well, just, just to follow up on Ed's comment, but I think it'd be appropriate and helpful, Ed, if you did attend the subcommittee meetings to provide your input, just because I think at times we have a different perspective and just have more information available than what, you know, others may have. So I, I would think it would be helpful at times to provide your comment.
I think it'd be helpful if you would all attend all the committee meetings because I really, and I'm not advocating that because I know that takes up a tremendous amount of time. And you do have a councilperson that is each year to, in a position to provide those liaison, that liaison role. Mr. Ryan's doing that very well right now. Mr. Morris and Mr. Manick have done it in the past. But I know that on the convention center subcommittee last week, I think there were three councilmen there. And I just think that that, and there's no, there's no, nobody has to interpret what happened at those meetings. You see it for yourself, you, you, you get it, you get the full flavor of what happened and, and, you know, I, I see no downside from, from councilmen going in and into those subcommittees. And I, I think that's, I think that's helpful.
One point I think is particularly helpful is if we have consultant reports that they need made to the entire subcommittee one time or as a group, rather than try and deal with individual members of the subcommittee, because I think there's an opportunity again for some very strong-minded subcommittee members to have an undue influence on the consultant. So the report needs to be made to the subcommittee as a whole and, and all of them get the same information at the same time. I think that would be helpful if we make that part of the process.
My concern is, and, and Ed alluded to the comments I made in 2010, which are pretty much along the same lines that he's saying now, is that, are we sure that the circular, around, just that circular system downtown is what is the best thing to do with the money? That was the basis of my comment really. I got a little, a field at, at that time, but, but it's, why worry that, while I think the subcommittees work hard and I appreciate everything they do, again, I'm, I too am grateful for all the energy and effort and the enthusiasm they bring to the process. By the time it gets to us, it's like going to Thanksgiving dinner at your mama's house. You either eat it or you don't. You don't get it, you can't go get a chili dog. I mean, you got to eat it right there. And that's what we get brought. We get served whatever they decide. And so anybody that raises a voice and says, maybe, did you ever think of this or did you think of that at that time, that voice gets shouted down literally. It happens, it's happened on this horseshoe before.
And just the opposite.
And the result is that, that I think, that's not the way it's designed, I would think. I think it's designed to work that way, but I believe that's not the way it should work.
But it's working that way. When we had the report from the sidewalk subcommittee, we sent it back to them. And so we're doing exactly what you suggested we should do.
I want you to think about the difference between the, the political horsepower of the sidewalk committee and the political horsepower of the convention center committee.
That's a different issue entirely.
Well, but it's, it, it, it makes, you can send it back to the sidewalk committee very easily and you, you can't send it back to the, to the convention center subcommittee because they're two different groups of people. They, they represent, I don't, I don't want to get into that. I, I don't, but I'm already too far into it. But I think that there ought to be a way, and, and it ought to be a way other than perhaps going to the meeting. I do think going to meetings is very powerful. I think that, but unless you go to the meeting and participate in the, in it, if you just go to observe it, I don't think that's going to do anything. I'd like to see some collateral information come along at the same time. I'd like to see the reports made perhaps to joint, jointly to us and them at the same time. I, I wouldn't want anybody on any one of those committees to think I'm not, I'm not absolutely pleased with the, the hard work they put in. But ultimately the buck's going to stop here and I would like to have more information and have more input into making the Thanksgiving dinner than just being forced to eat it or go home.
Councilman Morris.
Well, a couple of observations. I think that you've got a system set up that, for what you described, Pete, as we get it and it's kind of take it or don't take it type situation. We've got a system set up where that also happens in, to some extent with the big advisory board. And that is because we've given the subcommittees, not only are they official meetings posted and minutes taken, they have voting power. So if you go back to the original MAPS, what you had was professional staff with the city hiring professional consultants for whatever subject matter it was, and that was getting, being put together and put in front of the MAPS board. And then you had, you only had that layer before it went to council. Now you've got another committee member. You've got, you've got a, another committee that feels like they have veto power on something and they feel very strongly about their subject matter and they get something in front of them and they, they feel like they're the ones that are supposed to put the project together. And then when they finally vote on it, it goes to the advisory board, the advisory board's kind of sitting there like, well, okay, that's what the committee wants. I mean, they, you don't hear a lot of discussion on those Thursday meetings of the advisory board about the subject matter on the individual committees because they feel like it was just, okay, it's been vetted, it's been brought to them. They pass it along and then we get the third level of it now. Now that sounds real negative towards the whole system, but I'm trying to explain why it's even more wieldy than the original MAPS projects were.
No, I, I don't disagree with that. I think that's a very good explanation of it.
And I can tell you, having gone as a, just a councilperson, I attended a few when Larry was the designated person. And of course I spent a year as the designated person. Now I've gone to a few when, as Pat is the designated person. And if a councilperson takes the time to either voice their opinion or if they're asked their opinion or make a comment on something, depending on which committee you're in front of, that can either be real good or real bad. And so the, the concept of council ought to go to the meetings and they ought to have some input. Sometimes that works and sometimes it doesn't work real good.
Well, but generally the, the council's given special preference at those meetings for their comments, generally.
Yeah, I'd like to just make it.
But I think that if, if you, if you make a comment that is not along the lines of what the, the stronger members of that committee think is going to happen, then it's seen as that their work is just being delegated. It's just an, okay, well, he's, that's, you know, that's going to be an opposition. Then all of a sudden you start getting the phone calls and, and the, and the, the meetings outside are everything saying, oh my God, the council's going to, going to cancel this or the council's going to change it or what's going on and so forth. It's, it's a very personalized concept in some of those committees because you have some very strong, strong-minded people about their subject matter. I don't know how you do it. I don't know if you, if you can change it, if you can redirect it, but somehow we've got to get to a system where we let our city staff, the people that we hire, the ones that we, we tell them what our policies are and they go implement them. And the people that we pay a lot of money for, the consultants and the engineers and so forth, need to be, need to understand more that they're working for the city and this body. They're not working for the subcommittees or even the advisory board. That, that's what you've got to have. You've got to have somebody that when, when you want a study that looks at all three things or you want a study that looks at this thing, the consultants and the engineers that, that we hire know that they got to provide information based on what the city staff and this body wants, not necessarily what the subcommittee and the advisory board wants. And the, and the, when it all gets washed out. Not that the subcommittee shouldn't have some value and they don't have input and they are dedicated citizens with, and they're volunteering a lot of time. But we, we've seemed to have blessed two layers down with the ability to do yea or nay on these projects before it ever gets to us. And I, and I think that's where, where we have a problem.
Okay. Any more comments?
Yes, speaking of that, I would just like to add that since it was brought up and I was going to wait for some time, but I think I'm going to go ahead and make my statement. As it relates to, to these committees, I think that, you know, when we look at all these projects that was part of this last MAPS, you know, I think at some point in time, we need to step back and realize that we might have put too much out on the plate in the first place. You know, and this issue as it relates to, to the, to the transit, we'll probably be sitting here talking in the next 10 years as it relates to where a point of destination that is going to really mean something in reference to moving people from one place to the other that is a revenue generator. And, and I just don't see it based upon what we have as far as the population and the density downtown Oklahoma City right now. And, and, and when we talk about this line that, that may go to, to the northeast side of Oklahoma City, that cut through the, the health science center, I think it has a great deal of, of a benefit in reference to supporting the line, the rail itself, and also moving people from a place to another place where there's a real activity and a destination that they would want to go to. But, you know, all these different committees and all these different consultants that we keep talking about, we keep paying money, bringing in another consultant, bringing in another consultant. I think at the end of the day, we need to be real about the fact and that is, you know, is the population there to support the rail system as it's presently laid out? Or can we look at something realistically that really will mean something in reference to moving people to a destination point where there's a real activity of population? And the, the committees themselves, I, I think sometimes when you look at hierarchies of government and you look at different forms of, of, of authority where you delegate duties to individuals, you know, you can over-commit anything. You can over-meet on any issue. The fact that we have all these different committees and then as, as Councilman Morris was stating, that one of the things that I find kind of interesting is that the lack of information that, that we sometimes receive from staff, as he stated, those individuals who are paid to do a job, to know the terrain, to know the geographics of Oklahoma City, know the movement and everything else about the city. But, you know, it's like the, the sidewalk. As Councilman Ryan stated, they brought, they brought the report to us, we said no, and now we see that the same report that we rejected is right back, is going to come back to us in a very few, in a couple of weeks, the same identical report. Now, I know that there's got to be people that is a paid employee for the city of Oklahoma City that know where the walk traffic is in northeast Oklahoma City, in northwest Oklahoma City, in the south part of Oklahoma City. And how in the world could you show anyone that out of all these different parts of the city, that one part of the city only gets $200,000 out of almost $10 million in funding? And the density of the population that exists in those parts of the city are never really considered as part of this evaluation and this, the process that they, they utilize? So what did we, did we ever see the formula that was used by the subcommittee to determine that this is the best place to put sidewalks in Oklahoma City on the money that is part of this, this MAPS program? We didn't, but I would like to know, is there a formula? And, you know, but staff, I would think, would have a clear knowledge of where the most needed areas are for sidewalks. And, you know, I, I, this is where I have a problem with, with, with the subcommittees. Yes, I could go to the subcommittee and I could tell them every street in northeast Oklahoma City, or Ward 7, that meets the criteria that was part of a resolution or the, I'm told that when Councilman Bowman was here, that the resolution in reference to connecting to schools, density of, of a particular area, that these were some of the benchmarks that they would be used and determined where sidewalks would be best utilized. And if I went to the subcommittee and showed them and pointed that out to them, I doubt very seriously if it would make any difference in reference to their decisions that they have made is where they want to spend the money for the sidewalks. And at the same time, what was supposed to be the totality of, of the sidewalks, now we find out we don't have the money, so we're only like about a fourth of the sidewalks that we were originally planned to, to develop. And, you know, these, this, I think these are serious issues as it relates to confidence with citizens' support of what we said we were going to do. As some people have stated, I doubt very seriously if some of these other projects that we would come forth and, and accept the fact that we're, you know, 50% short of what we need in order to complete that project. And I think we need to get back to those projects that really mean something to the citizens that, that made all of this possible for us. You know, and, you know, I, you know, it's just like these citizens that come here this morning. One spoke about crime, one spoke about transportation. Yeah, they can come and observe, but did we satisfy their, their complaint? No. You know, we're going to put some more police officers out on the street, but did we satisfy the young man's complaint about, you know, are we going to have Sunday's transportation? You know, the need for, for maybe some type of campaign as we, as it relates to violent crime in, in Oklahoma City? You know, and I, I just think that just going to those meetings and just because we're the councilperson and being there at the meetings, I don't think it's going to change anything in reference to, to their decision-making. I mean, we appointed them to serve and do their job and I respect that. But I just think that sometimes we, we forget about those individuals who should be considered the experts as, as city employees in reference to the positions that they have, to have some more input in reference to some of these decisions that, that are being presented to us. And I, I have a really serious concern about this here, this subcommittee decision on the sidewalks. And I think everyone on this council should. If you, if you look at the fairness of, of what we should be doing, and especially when you look at the historical background of, of, of one part of this city in the northeast side of Oklahoma City, the challenges that they have had to, to endure in reference to receiving an equitable delivery of services, I, I just think that we got to do better than this.
Councilman Ryan.
Just a comment, the, the purpose of the committee and subcommittees was to have citizen representation as we went forward. They weren't chosen because they were experts in sidewalk design or transportation. They were chosen to represent the views of the citizens, to, to try to ensure as we went forward, that we gave the citizens what they're entitled to. Now, on the matter of sidewalks, there were, there was a set of criteria developed. It was developed by consultants, public works department, and the city council had input into it as well. And we approved those criteria. Now, they didn't result in what we may be expected, but they, if the subcommittee developed criteria, we approved it and they went forward on the basis of that approved criteria. And when it was sent back to them, they reviewed the criteria to make sure that the, the suggested projects conformed to that criteria and they did. Now, if we have difficulties with the criteria, then it's up to us to back off and set new criteria. But they, they were given a set of rules to play by. The consultants came in and I, and I was interviewed by the consultants and I think all my colleagues were as well, to, to have input in the development of the sidewalk criteria. And once we've approved it, there was no other choice but for the subcommittee to go forward based on the criteria that had been approved by the city council, by their, their own body and by the MAPS oversight. Now, if we don't like it, we can go back and we can make this a very political kind of thing. We can just solve all our problems, not all our problems, but we could solve some of our problems by putting sidewalks in where the political pressure's the greatest. And I would think that would be the, one of the greatest mistakes we can make, to inject politics into what should be, as our councilman, my colleague, Councilman Kelly points out, a decision based on facts. Those facts ought to be, in the sidewalk- Those facts ought to be, in the sidewalk subcommittee example, those facts were based on criteria that we, the city council, approved as we went forward.
But Councilman Ryan, you know, by no means did I mention the word "politics." But what I will stand for is the fact that you have citizens who bring issues and complaints to us, and it is my citizens' concerns and their complaints, nobody in reference to a political agenda. It is strictly what the citizens feel like that have not been delivered to them. That was my point. You know, and if the consultants met with me, if that was a meeting in reference to getting my input as it relates to where the best area for sidewalks in Ward 7 was, that wasn't a meeting. Because that was not what I was asked as it relates to the 15- or 20-minute little meet and greet that I had with them. And that was all it was. And so I'm not engaging politics by any means in reference to my concerns. My concerns are strictly based upon what my citizens have come to me and have shared to me. It was just two weeks ago on 63rd Street, the Wildwood Neighborhood Associations, they had their annual picnic, and one of the main issues that they confronted me with was why we can't get a sidewalk down 63rd Street in a neighborhood that also leads to a school heavily as far as population? And, you know, these are issues that are right questions that they should ask. It has nothing to do with politics.
Well, I would take exceptions to that. The minute you talked about fairness, you were talking about politics. However, in addition to the MAPS 3 sidewalk projects, I'd like to point out the city's investing a lot of additional money in sidewalks throughout the city. Every time we take an arterial street and reconstruct it to four lanes, part of that project is to install a sidewalk. So, the city is getting a lot of sidewalks, based on the GeoBond proposal that was approved in 2007, and the MAPS for 3 money. And if we want to spend more money on it, that's a council's policy decision to be made. If we don't think that we're spending enough on sidewalks, we can find other monies, hopefully, to spend on sidewalks. But I think it needs to be a policy decision based on some real facts, not on just the fairness issue or the political issues that I suspect are influencing a lot of our discussion.
Moving along, can we move this along? Because we have some, go ahead, if you.
Just one comment. I went to the sidewalk subcommittee meeting, and I think that they are still in shock that they only have 26 miles to work with as opposed to 70, and they only get to use the top. I think that they are sending it back to us, but they're also sending it with an accompanying resolution pleading with us to come up with additional funds, which would then allow us to go down the priority list, which would add infused sidewalk projects and some of the wards we're talking about.
I think it's an excellent idea, and I was at the subcommittee meeting as well. And I congratulate them on suggesting that we take the criteria that had been established, the list of sidewalk projects that were a result of that criteria, and add those to our plan, put additional sidewalks in, given the fact that we hopefully will find some additional money to do that.
Councilman Greenwald, items from council.
I had a couple of additional comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I thought you.
One is that I think today we've proven the old adage, how well it applies to city council meetings, and that is that meetings expand to fill up the time allocated for them. And I'm guilty as anybody else, so don't take that personally. But a couple of comments. One, if that criteria, and I agree with Councilman Ryan, that that criteria went through all that vetting, if it comes up with a result that is that obtuse, then we ought to look at the criteria. So you said we ought to look at the criteria. If we don't like it, I think we ought to look at the criteria. If it comes up with a result that's that obtuse, then there is something wrong with the criteria. There was something in it that wasn't considered. I do, one statement that you said, Pat, that I agree with completely. I think the idea of allocating money word by word is a mistake, but we do it every year. I don't like it when we do it. We do it every year with the road money. Everybody seems to love that. I don't like it. I think it's a mistake. I think it's not the way we ought to be doing it, but we're cutting the pie as we speak with regard to $8 million worth of road money. So, if it's good for one, it ought to be good for the other. I mean, if it's wrong, it's wrong both places.
And I think that's been taken a little bit out of context, Councilman White, because, first of all, we had this discussion with the sidewalk committee issue before council. I never mentioned the fact that we should have an equal assessment of funds for each ward. Now, somebody else might interpret that to be that, but it never came out of my mouth. And I don't agree with the fact that the eight councilpeople should sit here and divide up the pie and say, I get this eighth, you get that eighth, and I get that eighth. But I think there's got to be a fairness in reference to looking at where the most need is in any part of the city of Oklahoma City, whether or not it falls in Ward 7 or falls in Ward 1 or Ward 6. And so, I just think that the level of evaluating the whole process should have a little bit more transparency in reference to the actual needs that exist throughout the city. And, you know, if you look at some of the history, I think you'll find that in trying to address that issue, you know, when Councilwoman Johnson was here, I remember that, looking at some of the projects, and it became more apparent that, you know, Ward 7 receives some more than Ward 5 and Ward 4. But it was only because when we started looking at the history of the city and looking at those areas that was in most dire need of services and development. And so, that's my response in reference to the ward-specific allocations of funds.
Can I interject something here? I just shared with the manager couch, and I think that's what you're going to address, the possibility of having the formulas, the criteria for the sidewalks presented to us at a subsequent meeting.
In a couple of weeks, we're going to have a presentation on, bring back what the MAPS 3 subcommittee sent back, and have a further discussion on that. And I just want to take one minute and talk a little bit about that. When MAPS 3 was passed, there was $10 million dedicated for sidewalks as we're going forward. It's slightly adjusted because it got moved out, but it's still that $10 million number is what we're working with. That hasn't changed. We're unable to get the mileage out of it as we had originally hoped because of the fact we're in, we did the mileage based upon what we were doing, streets or sidewalks additions per mile in Ward 8, where you're doing a long road that's already flat and there aren't many obstacles, and you're just putting the sidewalk down. None of the sidewalk areas we're going to follow in that criteria because we're going into older neighborhoods, and we should have anticipated that. But we're going into older neighborhoods, and each time we hit every 60 feet, we're hitting a driveway, and to make that driveway comply with ADA requirements, we've got to take out that driveway, a section of that driveway to blend it in. And that's where the big issue is and why we're unable to achieve the overall net numbers that we had hoped, although the same gross amount of dollars, that $10 million, is still going in. But I think we need to step back for a second as how we got in this situation. And we got in this situation for decades and decades of not building sidewalks in this community. And we've changed that. We now require that the home builders put sidewalks in the new subdivisions. We made a conscious decision, this council did in 2007, to go for with the bond issue to put sidewalks in. We're putting $70 million of sidewalks in with that bond issue. We made a conscious decision with MAPS 3 to put in $10 million of sidewalks. We're doing that. We made a conscious decision to go after federal funds to get some additional sidewalks in some certain areas. We're doing that. Walkability is important. This council has made it a priority, and we're doing what we can, but we are so far behind the curve that there's a lot of money that needs to be done. None of the projects that the MAPS 3 is recommending in their $10 million allocation, which is less than 10 because, but it's still that $10 million, is a bad project. You look at them, and you go, that makes sense, that makes sense. I've gone down through each one of them. They all make sense to do, but there's a lot of projects beyond that that make some sense too. We're just in a hole, if you will, on sidewalks. And I think we're going to present some options to put some additional dollars in to help us build that, get us out of that hole. Not enough, it's still not going to be enough to be where we need to be, but hopefully to address some of the issues that the council has brought forth today. And I think we need to step back and take a look at this from the big picture, that this is a problem. It's a problem in Oklahoma City. It leads to some of our walkability issues, our transit issues. It kind of all ties together, but it really goes back to decades and decades of not building sidewalks in this community. And we're working, we're doing a lot of right things to address that, but we can't just fix it overnight. So, that was my.
Thank you. Let's move on. Councilman Greenwald. Councilman Sawyer.
At the risk of taking any additional time, I did want to say three quick things. I had an opportunity to speak to Mrs. Kennedy's government class at Santa Fe Charter High School last week, and I wanted to give a shout out to Pam Ortega, who was one of our youth council members two years ago who invited me to come. We have a young woman in that class who volunteers at our animal shelter, and she encouraged us all to take a hard look at improving some of the services that we can provide in regard to animal welfare. So, thank you for those comments. I really want to congratulate the folks at MestaFesta and at the Plaza District and down on the river this weekend. They had great crowds turn out at all three of those things despite the rain, and I really appreciate all the efforts. And I would like to also send a quick thank you to Kenny Clark, Patricia Presley, and Tim Rhodes. We've had a permitting glitch. A new rule went into effect, a new state law on January, July 1st, that impacts how our folks that are having festivals have to permit. And there's a 14-day change in that, and her office was extremely helpful to both McNally's to have Oktoberfest and Schlegel Bicycles to have Schlegelfest next weekend. So, thank you to the Port Clerk's office.
Councilman Kelly.
I've already said.
Councilman Ryan.
I think open a new topic for argument, discussion. In last Sunday's newspaper, there was a feature article about the 10 most dangerous intersections in Oklahoma City, based on the number of accidents, fatalities, and otherwise that we've had there, and it's had some additional media coverage, I understand, on some of the TV networks. And I would ask the city manager or somebody from Public Works to give us, this council and our viewing public, some idea of the strategy that we have used to address this problem.
I'd be happy to bring back a presentation on that, Councilman.
I think it's a serious issue for all our citizens, and we've got a plan in place, and I think it's important to have that plan related to the city council and our viewing. Thank you.
City manager, just a real quick one. I'd like you to check in on, if you would, with the fire department and IMSA. I was briefed last night that some facilities in Oklahoma City have a special, and Chief, you may know the name of it, a special thing that the fire department have that allows them entry into a building with a special key. And this particular facility had a call go out that IMSA was dispatched to as the only provider, correctly with our new protocol. They didn't have the key to get in. And so I'm sure somebody has addressed that situation, and I think it also has some implications with Haiti communities possibly. So, they're called Knox boxes?
Those are called Knox boxes, and, you know, I don't know, it would be up to the facility to decide whether they want to give a key to IMSA or not. Just get the chief to research how they want to handle it.
Just make sure that it's been, I assured the neighbors that this was just, in implementing something like this, we come up with things like this and that it would be taken care of, looked at.
I'd be happy to look into it.
Thank you. Moving on, citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens? Clyde Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Madden, ladies and gentlemen, the council. I came here to appeal that y'all can have more policemen, all of the city, especially the shopping mall. A fellow got shot the other day. It's outrageous, and I think the money should be to high. The 18 police officers, the chief, city, said, and I asked y'all to do that. People's coming down. Well, some has grown big since I've been down here, and we need to protect our citizens. I asked y'all to do that. Clyde Madden, your street.
Thank you, Clyde. That's the only citizens I have signed up. City managers report.
I just want to highlight the sales tax collections report. Nice story in the Oklahomans this morning on that. I want to point out that, yes, we had a very healthy sales tax check in September. It was the strongest ever. And the economy generally has been good here. It's higher than normal, partly because of the hailstorm that we had in June. I mean, there were a lot of roofs being replaced. We had that occurrence two years ago when we had a hailstorm, and a few months later we had some very strong revenues on that. I'm not trying to be negative at all. I mean, this is very healthy. We're in good shape as we go forward. You know, I feel very good about our situation. I am fairly confident that those numbers will not continue at that rate. And there are a lot of uncertainties out there. Mr. Ryan likes to pour cold water on the situation on a regular basis, but, you know, the federal debt's before us, and it doesn't matter, well, it does matter who's elected president, but whoever's elected president, it's going to be a tough few months between then and the first of the year as they try to put together a new federal budget. And, you know, with our potential federal facilities here in Oklahoma City, I mean, I think there are some risks as we go forward with it. It's going to be, there are some tough economic claims or times ahead for us. There's a lot of articles out talking about potential recessions after the first of the year. I'm not saying that, I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but we've had some really good months, and that's great. And we're going to try to keep those reserves, but going forward, two things are going to happen. One, I'm sure that that rate of growth isn't going to continue, and there are uncertain times ahead.
Jim, I have a question about, we've talked, because we've now started in this comeback mode for the last year or so, how close are we to filling in the hole that was created by the shortage?
Great question. Craig and Doug were in my office yesterday discussing that, and we projected if the recession hadn't occurred in eight or nine, and we were projecting at the same growth rate we've had, we're just, we're almost where we would have been.
Okay. So, we're still really short? I mean, this, short of what it would have been without the recession a little bit?
We are just a little bit, but it's closing. And we were looking at it just yesterday, and that's a great question, because we're not quite to that point, but we're approaching.
I thank you, Mr. City Manager. I was just given a late request from a citizen to be heard, so with your permission, we'll go back and hear from the citizen. Bob Kemper, if you'd come forward, please, sir, and state your name and address for us, and then address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, councillor, city manager. I just want to add my voice to the notion of increased dialogue. We have seen how well dialogue has helped in the Boulevard project, and I think in our transportation future, that we need to look at integration of all of our modes of transportation. I feel it's important for us to hire an expert in the area of bus transportation to try to understand the system we have now and what we can develop, and how this can be integrated into the streetcar system and commuter rail into our streets and highways. It's a very critical issue, and as a former transportation engineering professional and as an advocate for public transportation, I have never seen where dialogue and continuing dialogue isn't important and contributes to a better system. I thank the council for a little opportunity to speak, but again, I encourage everyone to keep in mind that we need to maintain an open dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Let's adjourn the recessed council meeting, excuse me, and let's convene the finance committee, and we have some presentations, Mr. City Manager.
We do. We're continuing on our CIP presentations, and our first presentation this morning is by the police department, chief city.
Before I start with the capital improvement plan, while he's pulling that up, we'll take the opportunity to thank the council for your consideration over the past several months in adding police officers. I think it'll be a huge benefit to the citizens, and I know there's been a lot of dialogue and there's a lot of needs within the city, but I really appreciate your consideration and the fact that you have added some law enforcement officers to this community. You ready? Our capital plan... Our capital plan by fiscal year, if you look at it, it'll be, you can see in '13, it's $21 million. The first three years, you'll see it's the highest, and it drops off in '15, '16, primarily because of the GO bonds for the headquarters building, for the Southwest Briefing Station. You have some large dollars there that we're going to have to fund those projects. If you look at, say, this year, you're looking at Southwest Briefing Station, we're going to remodel the property room, you've got use tax being used for helicopters and cars, you have headquarters building, some use tax for headquarters building along with the bond, proper management facilities included in that number. So, there's some big, there's some big numbers there and some big projects that we're going to be doing in the next several years, so that's reflected in our, in our plan. The summary of the projects, again, Police and Courts Headquarters, as I was talking about, makes up about $50 million of that. Our equipment, which is primarily vehicles, number of vehicles that we purchased, and I'll show you that in future slides here, make up a large, large part of that to make up that $86 million. Look at projects by type, excuse me, you can see, again, Police Headquarters and the Courts Complex. Courts Complex is included in the bond funding that we're reflecting here, make up 58% of that. And the equipment, which is vehicles and those types of things, is about 36%. Projects by funding source, again, both the use tax and GO bonds make up about $8 million of the total $86 million of all of our projects. The proposed Police Headquarters, now, this is the initial rendition of our headquarters, this is not what it's going to look like, but ADG, who has our project, wouldn't let me throw up the newest one because it's not perfect. And these architects, they want it to be more refined before they do. What you'll see, though, you will see the plan and the color scheme will be a mixed red brick and light brick to coordinate with the Civic Center, the same type of brick, try to blend it into that, to the surrounding environment. The Police Headquarters Complex is budgeted at about $25.6 million. We're hoping to start construction of that project in the summer, either June, July, or August of '13 of next year. That project should take 18, a minimum of 18 months. The Courts Project, again, this is not what the building's going to end up looking like, but it was our original design. The Courts Project is $24.9 million, and construction will begin approximately in June of 2014. So, you're looking at our project starting in '13, and then 12 months from that, they will start the Courts Project, so you'll have both projects going on at the same time Southwest Briefing Station, we're hoping to have construction started this summer. Bids went out, we're looking at the bids, they're a little bit overbid, so they may end up, they're talking about going back out for bids on the construction. But that project is supposed to be, is going to be built at a site at 54th and South Portland, on the southwest corner. Actually, it's going to be on Airport property, we've been working with Airport to prepare that property for that site. Again, it was proposed cost at $2.7 million. And when we finish that, we will redistrict, we will, we will remove our officers during that redistricting, and we will close Will Rogers Division, so we'll still just have four divisions, we will not have five divisions. Excuse me. Property Management Unit, this unit is going to be just east of our new headquarters building. It'll actually be connected somewhat. It's going to be remodeled and refurbished by, to the tune of about $1.6 million. It needs major upgrade in our heating and air, electrical and fire suppression, actually sprinkler system within the facility. We're also going to remodel the south end of the property area, so that that will be where we will actually receive and monitor and track our sex offender registration population. And it'll have some remodeling, hopefully it'll blend in more to our new building also, Our vehicles, I guess you've probably seen, we've already released what our new vehicles are going to look like, they're all black. The current car costs, out of the box, about $30,000. This is with the police equipment, and we add the lights and the sirens and that type of equipment. It does not, it does not include our IT, all of our computer, computerized hardware within the vehicle, which adds about almost $8,000 to that vehicle, once we do that. But again, from year to year, a lot of that equipment is transferred from one vehicle to the next, so if we keep this car five years, the overheads, the radios, some of the computer equipment, if it's, if it's not outdated, will just be moved over to the next vehicle for cost savings. We've built in a 5% per year increase, so you can see, but we're projecting by 2017, the base price of that vehicle will be $36,000. Our replacement by year, you can see that for this year, we've projected 85 vehicles to be purchased at $2.5 million, and this includes all of our vehicles, not just our black and whites. In '14, $146, you can see the numbers going up. Our criteria for replacing those vehicles is around 100,000 miles. Usually, they'll be over that by the time we get them replaced. We put on about 20, I think about 22,000 miles a year on a, on a black and white vehicle that's in the field on average. And that's what the replacement plan looks like. In many cases, we end up actually purchasing less than what you see here, not all the funds are expended. Our helicopters. Both helicopters are due to be replaced. We've had them, we used to replace them every three years. We have kept our helicopters now for almost 12 years, and it's actually resulted in the savings to the city of several million dollars over that 12-year period. So, we've managed to keep them in the air, we keep them refurbished, they're in good shape, and we should get a good trade-in value on them, but they are due for replacement. So, you can see here, you can see the replacement cost at $5.6 million, that that is budgeted in this year's budget to replace both helicopters. We will not replace both helicopters at the same time. Our plan is to replace one helicopter, the oldest helicopter, which is a year older than, than one of the other ones, replace it this year, and then replace the next helicopter the following year. It still takes probably about, I would guess about 12 months, once we place that order, to get those helicopters, once they're built. Maintenance costs, you can see, run anywhere from $75,000 to $90,000. The large amount for this year, the $514,000, is basically a rollover cost, it's maintenance that we've had over years that we've maintained as contingent funds. This year, we had several things happen, especially since helicopters getting older, having to replace a turbine recently, and some other things which have raised our costs on maintenance, but that $514 is what you see as a rollover of those costs in our budget, not necessarily something we will use, especially if we purchase the helicopters. Mobile Command Post. I'm pretty excited about the Mobile Command Post. You authorized the purchase of this command post with $500,000 from our Justice Assistance Grant, our federal grant. Originally, it was for a police command post. In working with the fire chief, we thought that it would probably get more use and have greater value to the city and to both of us if we made it a joint command post. I'm not sure you'll see a joint command post between fire and police anywhere in the city, which goes to show...
In the country.
I mean, in the country, yeah, not the city. Anywhere in the country, I've never seen one. So, we're pretty excited about it. I think the hardest part's going to be deciding what color we're going to paint it. I suggested purple, because if you mix, you know, red and blue, you get purple, maybe, but anyway, we'll probably paint...
I'm just real curious how fire, oh, police got up there ahead of fire on the name up there.
Well, that has not been decided yet. This is my presentation.
Okay.
That's how that got up there first. So, but ultimately, we're probably going to end up having to flip a coin or something on this one, and anyway, it'll probably be something like red, white, and blue, that'd be appropriate for, blue for police and...
Alphabetical.
I won't come up with a response to that. I'll get myself in trouble. Anyway, we're pretty excited about the fire department, we've been working closely together. Actually, fire, if you get the wildfires, you know, we're assisting each other. Fire's probably going to end up getting more use out of this. They have people that can already drive the cabs. The thing we're going to do with this is, it's going to have a separate cab, so, which we like, because you can, once the cab, once the cab gets old, it needs to be replaced, you don't have to replace the whole command post. The command post can be updated if needed, and actually lasts longer than the actual cab will, so. That's, that's basically my presentation. Any questions?
Questions from council?
Just a quick question out of curiosity, Chief, on your Mobile Command Post, you have a separate power source inside of it?
The Southwest Briefing Station, as I understand it, does not, even though it was located there with future use in mind, the current construction doesn't include the helicopter facility, is that correct?
It does not. It's, the helicopter facility will be probably an additional, about one and a half, $1.3 million is what we budgeted at, but it will be, the site is being prepared to add that at a later date.
Okay. And I didn't see, other than the purchase of helicopters, I didn't see anything in the five-year plan to relocate that, is it, do you think it's that far out before you're going to relocate?
You know, it just depends. Right now, there's, our site is, I mean, we own that site that we currently have down at the old downtown airpark. We're not being forced to leave that area, so there's no real hurry at this point, but at some point that we are, then we're going to have to, we're going to have to make preparation to build that. I just don't know what that, what timeframe that will be.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you, Chief. Next presentation by the fire department, Chief Bryan.
As Chief Bryan's coming up, I want to, I want to elaborate on something Chief City said, that, you know, the cooperation between the Oklahoma City Police Department and the Oklahoma City Fire Department is extraordinary. If you've ever been out on a wildfire site or a tornado site and seen the cooperation and how they work together, it's really, it's really gratifying to me, because there are issues in other cities between the two units, and, and I think that the cooperation between these two units, these two excellent public safety departments should not, that should not go unrecognized. It is great to see how well they work together, they get around a little bit, but it's, it's really a good situation, and I really like the fact that it's a joint command unit out there. I think that'll only help enhance that as we go forward. So, thanks to both of you for, for, one, your cooperation, and secondly, the idea of the joint command.
Appreciate that, and I agree, I think it'll only make things better. Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. Very briefly here, we'll kind of go over the capital improvement plan for the next five years for the fire department. Our project types are basically broken down into facilities, and again, you can see this over the next five years, the estimated cost of these projects in facilities are a little less than $9 million, vehicles, $21 million, and equipment, a little over $1 million. As far as the funding source, the equipment, which we'll get to here in a minute, the majority of that is funded through the fire sales tax fund. Our facilities primarily funded out of the 2007 general obligation bond projects and vehicles from the MAPS III use tax. As far as equipment, what we're probably talking about more than anything, the majority of that funding will go to continue to purchase and upgrade our defibrillators. There, you see a picture of the LifePak-15, which is the fully automatic defibrillator that our paramedic shoes on our advanced life support units. The LifePak-1000 is the semi-automatic, which is, again, what you kind of see all over the city in various facilities and so forth, that would be on our basic life support and other type of vehicles. In fiscal year '13, we're getting 50, purchasing 50 of the LifePak-1000s, and the cost of those units is about $38,000 apiece. Also, in fiscal year '13, we're getting 15 of the LifePak-15s, those are $38,000, a little over $38,000 per unit. And so, the total cost for fiscal year '13 on those, on that equipment, is about $770,000. It includes a maintenance agreement, especially with the LifePak-15, that you have to have for that, and accessories as far as chargers, the carrying bags and so forth. In fiscal year '14, we're anticipating purchasing 12 of the LifePak-15s, and that would be at an estimated cost of about $460,000. On vehicles, we'll break it down by year, and you can see there the amounts that we're estimating, and again, this is all part of our vehicle, our ongoing vehicle replacement program. Again, our biggest purchases, obviously, are engines and ladders. Engines probably now, currently probably in the neighborhood of about $600,000. A ladder is on a closer to $800,000, maybe a little bit more, depending on the equipment. But as far as fiscal year '12 and '13, coming out of that, five brush pumpers, two engines, 14 support vehicles, and a few other apparatus coming out of that. There's a little bit of carryover there, I'll mention that, because this was funded from the city and schools' use tax, so we have one more year remaining of funding from that source before we go in more to the MAPS III use tax. In fiscal year '13 and '14, five engines, 15 support vehicles. Fiscal year '14 and '15, three engines, one ladder, and 10 support vehicles. Fiscal year '15, '16, six engines, one brush pumper. We'll replace a heavy water tanker, 13 support vehicles. In '16 and '17, eight engines, and another hazardous materials unit, and about seven or eight support vehicles in that year. As far as facilities, and primarily, we're talking about fire stations here, again, as part of the 2007 bond issue, there were a total of five fire station projects, three additional stations from the total that we have now, and two replacements. The first of those projects, the new Station 26, located at Southwest 119th and Rockwell, we are in the design phase, we should have the plans within the next month or so and be able to go out for bid on the construction contract on that. Hopefully, we start breaking ground and getting to work on that project, maybe in December or January. Station 29, we're still in the land acquisition process there, but this is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of Southeast 164th and Douglas. So, again, as soon as we find the property for that, we will, we'll start doing the design phase as well. But this, the previous one and this one are two of the additional station projects that were funded through the 2007. And the last of those, Station 38, be on the, out Southwest 59th and Richland. We do have the property purchased for this already, so that's, that's not an issue, and again, as far as this, this station and the one that I just mentioned previously in the southeast part of the city, there's some discussion, and as far as which of these projects should have, one should go in front of the other. Currently, the response data would support and justify going to the southeast station first before this project, but we'll continue to monitor that as we go along. Additional station projects or facility projects, Station 1, our administration offices, we have about $62,000 in necessary repairs there. We've had some structural issues, I don't know if it was the recent droughts over the past couple of years, but we have some significant structural issues that we have to address, as well as some HVAC in the administration side of the building. As I mentioned, Stations 21 and 23 were the stations identified in the 2007 bond issue as needing replacement, and we're also in discussion, as it, as that next bullet point indicates, we might intersperse those projects in between the new station projects. Station 21 is at Southwest 29th and Independence, Station 23, Southeast 29th and Eastern. Obviously, and it's something that I speak about in our budget presentation every year, is the age and condition of our current facilities. We have done some... We have done some, you know, of our own surveys and as far as with our facilities maintenance work section, about the condition of those and what we think might need to be done as far as any type of major remodels, or recommending that we replace them. So, after the, our budget was approved for this fiscal year, we've been talking with OMB about maybe going out and, for an RFP, for a consultant to come in and do a comprehensive look and study of our current facilities and make some recommendations, maybe as far as a long-range plan that we could put into place as far as how we address our current facilities, as far as, again, recommendations of what might need a major remodel or replacement and so forth.
Chief, along that line, one of the things that I've realized, just in the last probably three or four months, is the, is the rebuild need. I mean, it's, we focused on expanding the system by bringing one to, out in Ward 4 and a couple of Ward 3, and one way out northeast towards Ward 7, but the, but the condition of the, some of the stations internally are pretty bad, I think. And I, I think that's where we, that we make it, get a formal process of what we're going to do about that, about a rebuild, remodel, renovate, whatever term you want to use to do it. I think some of them are, are probably, should have a priority at least equal to, if not in excess of, some of the new station things. There's some old ones that really need some serious repair work.
Yes, sir. I mean, we, and some of them, again, are around the 50-year-old mark and just the size of them and compared to the size of fire apparatus now, we've, we've outgrown them and the additional firefighters working in those stations. So, again, and as far as, you know, the national standards that we at least try and look at to give ourselves an idea of where we're at, they would probably follow.
Well, I don't recall that in the past being such a formalized part of your long-range plan. Probably has been, I just wasn't awake at the time you made the presentation, but it seems to me well-taken that you, that that's a big part of it going forward because maintenance of the infrastructure is probably as important, if not more important, than building new infrastructure.
You're correct. And we have a need in both those areas. Yes, sir.
Well, the lessons learned from years ago, one of the stations he listed as a rebuild, Station 21, has already been redone once. And in my opinion, the lesson's learned is you can't remodel some of these old facilities. You really need to tear them down and start all over. And, right, and you, you just get into so many things when you start talking about just a remodel or an expansion of or some of that. We see it on the MAPS for Kids project sometimes with the schools and so forth, but it, it just, it makes more sense in today's world, in my opinion, to, to go back in and tear it down and let's build a new one, and really build one that's going to go. You know, he mentioned Station 1, an admin needs some work done. You're approaching 40 years on that building, and people in my generation think, well, it's brand-new. We, we just built it, it seems like. I can remember when it was under construction, but we're approaching 40 years on that building. So, it's, a consultant would probably be very valuable in pointing out that some of those are not worth trying to patch and paint.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing, and thank you, chief, for your very informative presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time this morning. Thank you.
Public Works Department.
As Eric's coming up, it would be, I'm putting to point out the, the loss that the department suffered over the weekend with the passing of Mike DeJocmo. Mike was a very, very dedicated city employee, a great face for the city during snowstorms, and just dedicated, a real loss to the city. So, I know our prayers and thoughts are with the family in your department, Eric.
And the department appreciates prayers and thoughts as well. Obviously, it's a departmental loss for us, especially as we've just put a lot of trust into Mike, but we've got a great staff. He trained them very, very well, and so, I don't think he'll see us miss a beat, but obviously, his loss is tremendous. Please present to you today the Public Works Capital Projects Plan.
Looks like we're advancing without, did you get it, Lee?
We did actually run this through yesterday without a hitch. It looks like we've got a hitch today. I'm going to go ahead and just get started, and we'll see if we can get control of the video here. Public Works, as you each know, is a, is a department that has six divisions, and we've got administration, engineering, street, traffic, and drainage maintenance, field services, stormwater quality, and oil gas. And so, responsible for a variety of things, but I think as you'll see as we go through the summary of the projects and the things that we've got in the upcoming capital plan for 13 through 17, majority of our works falls into the area of streets. Our annual operating budget is apartments about $44 million. We also employ about 400 different positions, a lot of those, again, in street maintenance. The plan that you have before you is one that you'll see that this year, 12, 13 is one is $123 million, 13, 14 is $68 million, 14, 15 is $49 million, 15, 16 is $77 million, and then we're back at $62 million in 16, 17. When we look at these, I think one of the things that you'll notice is we do have a slight dip in the years that we're currently in, and this follows the recession that occurred just a couple of years ago. So, when we talk about projects, we talk about what occurred, we could only enter into so many design contracts two years ago, which are now being constructed today. And so, with that construction being less, that's why you see the smaller numbers today, but those are on the rise. We're actually entering into more design contracts today, so you're actually going to see those numbers increase in future years. And so, it's just a dip. It's something that we're actually recovering from. We look at projects by type. You'll see those here on this slide. You'll see 284 million total. You'll find that the majority of the work in our $381 million capital plan is in streets. Bridges is obviously important, traffic, drainage, facilities, equipment, and also This is another graph that'll probably help you understand that split in the division of those projects a little bit better, but you'll see that over 75% of the work in Public Works is under streets. You'll see facilities at 9%. You'll see traffic as 3%, libraries 2%, and drainage at 7%. We look at the capital improvement project status. We currently have about 30% of our projects in design, just short of that at 24% in construction, and then in the future, we've got about 43% of the projects that are yet to come as a part of the overall plan for the next five years. As we look for the funding sources, you'll see that we're predominantly funded by the GEO bond, and the majority of that is in the 2007 at 78%, but when you combine that also with some of the funds that you periodically receive on the 2000 GEOs, a little over 80% total on GEO alone. There are other funding sources that you'll see in this list. You'll see the Capital Improvement Fund. You'll see the Public Property Authority. That's a lot of our advanced A and E on projects as we get them ready for construction ahead of time. You'll find that we have the Storm Water Drainage Utility. That's that part of the water bill that is sent out that helps us maintain drainage channels. You'll also see some TIF or Tax Increment Financing. That's a portion of the Project 180 projects as well. Some of the examples of some of the things that we do, this is obviously Classen Boulevard. These are completed projects to, to show you the different kinds of streets and streetscapes that we complete each year. And this is a project that was completed in three different phases. It was back in '09, and it was finally completed in the year 2011. But streetscapes, when we talk about beautification projects in streets, it's not, not all just widening and resurfacing projects. You obviously see landscape medians and other ornamental items placed in, within those streets. A typical widening, this would be Pennsylvania Avenue from Northwest 150th to 164th. This was a project that was completed by Allen Contracting for about $5.3 million in March of 2011. Obviously, when we look in our suburban areas of Oklahoma City, we continue to see growth, and as that growth occurs, we are widening streets to take care of traffic needs throughout Oklahoma City. This next one is Morgan Road, Southwest 15th to 29th. This was a markwell paving job at $2.5 million. It was completed just earlier this year in January, but again, widening's occurring in each of our quadrants of Oklahoma City. Northeast 16th, this is a picture of yet another project that, that is typical for us. It's a resurfacing project. This was Rudy Construction at $1.6 million. These are the residential resurfacings that are occurring, occurring as a part of the bond issue. So, we identify areas, square miles at a time, that we actually go in and do the resurfacing. Now, we break those miles into quadrants, and we do those in four smaller packages. This is something that you can expect to see in the coming years with the bond issue. Of course, Project 180 is a significant portion of what's occurring in Public Works. As I mentioned before, partially funded by TIF. It's also funded by the bond. These are some of the completed photos of Reno and Robinson. Of course, you can see Sixth Street here. These are a couple of the streetscapes that we're very familiar with. And we've got a lot of construction outside City Hall today, also around the Civic Center. The majority of that that you see is in packages 4 and 5, which are all expected to be completed at the end of this year, the very first part of next year. So, a lot of progress has been made on Project 180. This is, of course, the renovated Mary Botanical Gardens, completed by Flint Co. and Lippert Construction. Obviously, there's a lot of work that's, that's been done there, and we're getting ready to finalize this project. We have a final change order amendment that is, that is being prepared for city council consideration, but having been open for over a year, this project's had a lot of community spirit and a lot of activity, so it's, it's well-known in downtown. We also move on to bridge projects, like the Route 66 Bridge. This was similar on construction. This was completed in late 2011, but a historic bridge rehabilitation project. This is the aerial view of that, and I think many of you probably attended the groundbreaking ceremonies there. Another iconic bridge, the Skydance Bridge over the new Interstate 40. This will actually connect the upper and the lower parts of the MAPS III projects. This project went early, obviously, to coordinate with the construction with ODOT. We did not want to have any delays while we were actually opening the highway, so that was opened early. We are lighting it nightly. I know that we are receiving requests, and we're getting ready to also start the Thunder basketball season, so you're going to, as you see it rotating from its traditional colors to the blue on Thunder Nights, and so, it's, it's very much a stir for Oklahoma City because we're getting a lot of comments about it. There's a lot of people asking what that is, and obviously, it's made a place for us here, so we're very proud of the Skydance Bridge. We have a series of traffic improvements that are continuing throughout Oklahoma City, and this is a part of the bond program. This is the intelligent traffic system. This is one of the examples that we've pulled at the intersection of Lee and Main. We're continuing to replace the controllers in these boxes that are computerized, and they're currently under Wi-Fi control. What that allows us to do is to actually send programming to the controllers remotely. We don't always have to be onsite to make traffic changes or to see if there is actually an intersection in distress. And so, as we modernize our intersections, we're continuing to do that. We've completed nearly half of the intersections in Oklahoma City, and we'll be coming back to you in a future meeting, hopefully, to make a proposal to complete the second half of Oklahoma City with available funds that are within the bond issue now. We're able to complete these projects under, under budget because of the Wi-Fi technologies. You have to remember, as technology improves, we no longer have to wire devices, it's just cheaper to go wireless, and so, there's a lot of opportunities here. I think you'll see continued success in the ITS program. Moving on to drainage, this is a typical project at Northwest 25th and Panale. This is a channelization project to reduce flooding in Oklahoma City. Chisholm Creek at Penn and Northwest 115th, much of the same. Again, we continue to, to modernize our channels. A lot of these were natural state, but we've been able to improve the channel flows to reduce a lot of high-water concerns across the city. Lightning Creek at Southwest 44th and Santa Fe is another one of those that's, that's part of our drainage plan. And then, moving on to the Chesapeake Energy Arena, we are just now completing the exterior renovations. This would be the new Southwest entry, getting ready for the new season to start here in just a few short weeks, and, but with that, we continue as a part of Public Works to manage large, large building programs like the Chesapeake Energy Arena as well. This is one of the interior shots of the arena. This is one of the restaurants. And then, the last few slides that I have for you today, we obviously work on libraries as well. This is the new Northwest Library that opened just a few short months ago, part of the 2007 bond. This is a view from 122nd Street. And then, we have also the, the newly opened Southwest Library that opened earlier this year at Penn and Southwest 134th. This is some of the artwork that's out there that is onsite, just to show some of the continued contributions that are being made there. But with that, obviously, as we work from a public works standpoint, our focus is still streets, drainage, drainage, and bridges. There's a variety of other projects that we're responsible for, and with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Yes, councilman.
As you get to the end of this five-year program, 2017, you'll approach the next bond. Do you have, and we, and we've talked about formulas for sidewalks, I'm not going to pull you into the MAPS III stuff, but do you have a formula for prioritizing street widenings? Or how do you, how have you done it in the past? How would you look to, in the future, how would you determine? Is there a set criteria? Is there a formula?
There, I wouldn't say there's a formula, but there's a lot of indicators that help us make those decisions. One of the biggest is traffic volumes. So, when we look at and we measure traffic volumes on, say, two-lane streets as they approach their maximum capacities and they require four-laning, obviously, those are prime candidates. But also, we can look at future development plans as we look at opportunities for developers to come in, and we've got widening projects to support, say, like the New Outlet Mall or other projects that are like that, those would also rise to the list. And then, I would say that there's just other considerations. For an example, we have private developers, like on Rockwell Avenue recently, that came to us on a plan that they had and approached the city on a widening. It may have not been on our radar. It's on their radar for future development, and we'll partner with them in those cases. So, I'd say there's more than one indicator. It's not just one set formula.
As we go forward, though, I think it's going to be different than we've seen in the 2000 and 2007 bond issues because we were so far behind the development curve at that point in time. We're not going to be that way as we go forward with the next group. We've caught up. Now, we're not, we're not done. There's still work to be done, but we're not so far, I don't envision that we're going to be that far behind in another four or five years. One of the things that Dennis pointed out is we look at the development patterns. We look at the planning department. They've got maps on where the platted lots are, where the proposed platted development's going to occur and such. Should we take a look at that and, and try to get ahead a little bit? But we've been in a cut, catch-it mode pretty much over the last 20 years, and there's a lot of, of development going in now in areas where we have four-lane roads going both ways on it. So, it's going to be a different picture as we go forward into the 2016 or 17 bond issue.
Can I ask you one more question? I know we're going to address this in two weeks, but just to pick up on what Pat was, just looking at the, this, in the paper, the top 10 worst intersections in terms of crashes, six out of 10 are on Northwest Expressway. Can you help me understand where, what we're responsible for and what ODOT's responsible for and?
So, if we're looking at Northwest Expressway specifically, the roadway is Highway 3 extending west from the Hefner Parkway or Highway 74 is under ODOT. The bridge over Highway 74, Hefner Parkway west is ODOT's.
Right, it enters.
Baptist Hospital east is Oklahoma City's. So, the bridge and west is ODOT, hospital in front of, and east is Oklahoma City. So, the one that is on the front page of the paper is at Penn and Belle Isle. That is an Oklahoma City responsibility.
Okay. And if you, if you, if you decided, I mean, that would just have to come from unlisted bond funds, or if you wanted to try and make changes? I mean, do you have?
Well, first of all, we've already made changes, improvements out there. We spent quite a bit of money working in that area, but since it is on the number-one list, it's something we're going to have to reevaluate.
You're talking about Belle Isle?
Yeah.
There have been improvements made just a couple of years ago where the concrete median was put in or the barricades were put in to separate the two lanes. We are experiencing some illegal right turns that are being made, and we're doing all we can to mitigate that. We've actually changed some of the signage in the last few weeks. We've added new green arrows as opposed to green lights, just to make sure that the drivers know that to go straight and not turn right. We're going to look at it some more. That's not the last, and we're going to look at the other intersections as well, and we'll bring those back to the council.
Erica, on one of your pictures you showed, a neighborhood street, and I noticed on the picture, there was a sidewalk by that neighborhood street. In the 2007 bond program, if a neighborhood is scheduled to have their streets redone, we are still under the paradigm that at least one side of that street will have a sidewalk put in if the neighbors so indicate that they would like them in their neighborhood?
The answer is yes. So, regardless of residential resurfacing, arterial resurfacing, or widening, we're putting a sidewalk on at least one street of every project as a part of the bond program.
And if a neighborhood did not want sidewalks in there, which was the case in one of the Ward 3 neighborhoods, then they don't have to have a sidewalk put in their neighborhood, is that correct?
I think we could work through that with them, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Eric, for your presentation. Let's come up with the MAPS office. David Todd is coming forward.
Good morning. I'm pleased to bring you the capital improvement presentation.
Good morning, I'm pleased to bring you the capital improvement presentation for the MAPS office today. Okay. Thank you. As you may know, the MAPS office has basically three different programs, we have the MAPS III projects, and we have the MAPS for Kids projects, which includes the sales tax projects, which you typically understand as MAPS for Kids, that's the renovations in the new schools. We have the suburban schools funding and the I-89 projects, which is not in the CIP, but it's something we oversee, and that was part of the bond issue that was done at the time that MAPS for Kids was begun. And then we also have the I-89 2007 bond issue, that was a separate bond issue, we're doing a portion of that with the school district. Total projects by type, in the next five years, you'll see a transition in the MAPS office from the MAPS for Kids, which is listed as OC Maps, to MAPS III as we go along in the program. We'll still have some suburban schools, and we'll still be doing a little bit of technology projects. Total funding by source, as you know, we're completely funded by the taxes that come in from the two different programs, and as I said, you'll see us transitioning from the school projects on into the MAPS III projects. As far as MAPS for Kids, construction is new and renovated schools, technology, we have computers and network projects all throughout the district, and then the suburban schools program, which is a grant program for 23 different school districts, and I'll talk about that a little more later. This drawing shows you location of all the schools within the Oklahoma City Public School District, and you can see that it is quite a large district, from Southern Hills, south to John Marshall, north, and then all the way out east to Green Pastures, which is out around the Spencer area. MAPS for Kids completion schedule, prior years, we've completed 43 schools, 2012 through 13, we currently have 24 schools that are under construction, and then in 13, 14, we will have three schools. So we will shortly be wrapping up the MAPS for Kids program and completing all of those schools for a total of 70 schools. I'm going to show you a few schools here, this is Mark Twain Elementary, new classrooms up on the left, you can see the new addition there on the right part, and then the lower picture shows you the beautiful new corridor that was put in there in Mark Twain. Caesar Chavez is a new school, one of the two new elementaries that we did, obviously an outside shot on the left, and then inside the corridor with the school graphics on the floor. Classen SAS up on the left side is a before shot, you can see that the roof was leaking, the floor was covered so that it didn't damage the floor. On the right side is an after picture with new windows, new paint, work on the bleachers, a lot of different things in there that really made that a much brighter space and a better sports facility. Spencer Elementary, the top-left picture is the existing roof, and on the right is the roof after it was replaced, you can see it was quite a difference, and that is from exactly the same point. Also, before and after picture for Sequoia Elementary, you can see in the top-left, you can see the portable buildings, you can see the shape of the corridor there between the schools, and on the right, you can see the new gym, the new classrooms, the portables are gone, the new corridor in between is new and nice and landscaped. You can also see some new roofing that was put on. Fillmore Elementary, left side, this is the old exterior on some classrooms there, the exterior had a lot of lead paint, so there was an extensive lead paint abatement project that was done, these were also old, old windows, not very energy-efficient. On the right, you can see the new windows, the new facade, the new soffits that were put in place for Fillmore. Eugene Field is one of my favorite transitional schools, as far as what happened before and after, you can see on the left is the before, and this is exactly in the same spot, and this is the after picture, how much nicer it is. Buchanan Elementary, up on the left is a before shot of classroom, you can see, again, the windows, not very energy-efficient windows, you can see the electric surface mounted, and then on the right, you can see the new renovated space with new windows, new ceiling, new floor, new paint. As far as technology projects, desktop computers, network equipment, classroom phone systems, there's also systems in the libraries for acquisition of the books. Here's a, I'd like to say typical, but each one is different, but this gives you an idea of what the computer labs look like that we're doing in the schools, new computers, new space, great learning space for the kids. Suburban schools projects, if you remember, the 23 different schools, they can apply for a prorated share of 30 percent of the MAPS money that was allocated, it can be used for a lot of different things, computers, software, technology, buses, vehicles, construction, like I said, all different kinds of projects. There's 23 different districts, you can see they go from Union City out to Little Axe, little piece of Norman, all the way up to Luther and Piedmont, so there's a whole lot of school districts that are getting to take part in the suburban school project. So MAPS for Kids summary, construction will be doing $131.9 million, technology 11.3, and we're estimating the suburban school projects will be 10.5. Now, the suburban schools have till 2017 to apply for the money, but they have till 2020 to spend it, so we're estimating that's where we'll be with a total of $153.7 million for MAPS for Kids. Moving on to MAPS III.
David?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just can't let it go by how important I think this MAPS for Kids program has been, especially as it relates to the Oklahoma City Public Schools, even though the city doesn't have a direct responsibility for any school district, without this program, there's just no way that especially the Oklahoma City Public Schools could have made these types of improvements, and I've got to believe that without this kind of investment by the citizens of Oklahoma City, we wouldn't have gained the economic growth that we've achieved ever since this program has been in place. You know, our kids certainly are the future of Oklahoma City, and if we don't provide an environment to where they have a better opportunity to learn and become better students and eventually better citizens, I think we're at fault, so I want to commend the citizens of Oklahoma City and the council and the staff for putting this project forward. Again, I'd just hate to even think about where especially the Oklahoma City Public Schools system would be right now without this program. Thank you.
Mira, if I could just add on, and I think following some of Derek's comments about our aging fire stations and the utility generally of taking those down, I think the opposite is true in the case of so many of our neighborhood schools, and it's lovely that we were able to retain a lot of the original building and yet renovate them to the same standard that our, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not saying that, renovate them to the new standard that the brand-new schools achieved. And so we've been able to do this, you know, wonderful blending of keeping our neighborhood historic schools and yet bringing them up to a very high standard.
Right, I agree, being able to keep some of those historic schools is really important to the neighborhoods, too.
Yeah, and I know it's not easy, it's often not easier, and it's often not, may not be as cost-effective, but it's meaningful for the neighborhoods, and so I really want to thank you for the extra attention. One other technical question, have we gotten the roof leaks stopped at Classen SAS? We had a flat roof issue.
I believe so, but we have some additional projects coming, one of the issues out of Classen SAS was there was a foam roof that was put on, and we knew it wasn't going to be there forever, and we're at that point, so we'll be replacing that soon.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, now going to MAPS III, this is the conceptual plan that most of you have seen for the park, the park is going well, we've got hard graves on, we've discussed it quite a bit, we've gone through public meetings, and we've got more public meetings coming up this month and with some focus groups, so making great progress on the park. Sidewalks were discussed this morning, we've gone through the master plan, and we'll be bringing that to you in about two weeks. Trails, we have four basic trails that we're doing, right now, we're working on the River Trail, it's broken into two phases, that's listed as number one on this map, goes basically from MacArthur up to Lake Overholser, plans are being done right now, making great progress on that. Then we also have the I-44 Trail, which is listed as two, the Draper Trail, which is listed as balloon three there, and then the Airport Trail, which is listed at four, and those are all later in the program. Modern Streetcar, that was discussed a little bit today, also, we have Jacobs Engineering on board, and we're beginning the analysis of the route, we're looking at a lot of different aspects of the streetcar as we go along. Convention Center, today you authorized us to negotiate a contract with Populus so that we can begin the conceptual part of this, and it's very important because we'll be able to bring them together later this month, we're planning a meeting so that we can get the Boulevard designer, the streetcar, the convention center, the park, all these people who are integral to this area so we can get together and have these meetings that we've talked about as far as coordination. Senior Wellness Centers, we have an architect on board that's ready to work with us for the first of hopefully four wellness centers, we're still looking at the operating partner, we, if you recall, we sent an RFP out, didn't get really the response we wanted, we pulled back, we revised the RFP for the operating partner, and we sent that to the subcommittee this month, it was well-received, we're looking at that, and we continue to work through that as we go along. State Fairgrounds, limited scope master plan is underway for the relocated carnival area, the additional parking, and then we'll soon be starting on the new expo center that you can see in this conceptual drawing is there on the left, so Fairgrounds is continuing on. Oklahoma River, a very exciting project, they had a great regatta this last week, we have already provided the starting gates that they use for the races, we're currently in design for the whitewater facility, we'll be interviewing for what we call Phase Two, which is additional racing components like scoreboard and some judging platforms and some starting lines, and we also, right now, have the lighting system is under construction. This is the timeline that we adhere to, that you've all seen, so we're still right on track with respect to the timeline. MAPS III by fiscal year, you can see that it's up and down a little bit, but it's mostly based on that timeline, 107.1 to 118.4 in 2016 and 17, for a total of $508.8 million. So MAPS Office summary, OC Maps construction, which is the schools, is 131.9, our technology component of that is 11.3, suburban schools 10.5, and the MAPS III of 508.8 gives us a total of $662.5 million. So capital plan by fiscal year, you can see it ranges from 207 to 96.9 in 1516 for a total of $662.5 million. That's it for my presentation, glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, David. Questions from the council? Seeing, and I'd just like to make a statement in my final few seconds as Vice Mayor before we turn it over to Chief Mars, there was a lot of conversation today concerning the various parts of the MAPS III projects, and there was some conversation being going about the subcommittee and the oversight committee. Chairman Ryan of the Sports Facility Committee has just overseen, along with Meg Salier on the committee and some other citizens, I think what everybody would say is a very successful implementation of the MAPS project for the arena, and that project had a number of challenges as it went on, did it not, Councilman Ryan?
It certainly did, Mr. Vice Mayor, we had a shortfall in the sales tax estimates because of the recession we had to deal with, some of the facilities in there cost more than we thought they were going to cost, but we were able to deliver a first-class training facility and a first-class arena renovation, the monies that we had available, by doing some value engineering, and the Oklahoma City staff did an enormously good job is to scaling down some of the things we've wanted to do in the arena area particularly to fit the budget. We're going to have it completed on schedule, on budget, and I think that's a real tribute to the City Public Works Department.
We had the City Public Works, just as the City Public Works is involved in MAPS III right now, we had an outside consultant that came in and did design work, just like many of the projects here have outside consultants, we had a citizens oversight committee that participated and voted on and gave recommendations to this council as we moved along, kept the council apprised of the challenges there were, and the bottom line, it did work. And so my final commercial is, I believe if we just stay the course, we'll all find that MAPS III will work by the time it's done. With that, we are adjourned.